Council and citizens, please come to order. It is Tuesday, December 11th. We are convening in regular session of the council meeting. Just in case you didn't recognize, we have one council person who has jaundiced electronically. So on my right, your left, Alicia Flory is joining from someplace in the world that she's with us today. Say something, Alicia.
Or not.
Mike told me to stay on mute.
Okay, good. Well, so much for that, anyway. If your mouth moves and we don't hear you, we'll know something's up, right? Yeah, you don't unmute. Okay. In just a moment, I'll ask everybody to stand, and we'll be led in an invocation by our Park and Recs Director, Tony Hurley-Mello, and been led in the pledges to the American flag and the Texas flag by Mayor Pro temp Schaffner. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of meeting today. We ask that you bless us abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Give us insight to lead with integrity with our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Dear Lord, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Phillip?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. The council had two people sign up in advance to speak. Michael Branham, if I said your name correctly, Michael, about turkey trot, I believe. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Mike Branham. I live at 2887 Redfern Drive here in Trophy Club. And this is my wife, Whitney Branham, and our little girl, Presley, as well. We live, obviously, at the same place. So, good evening, mayor and council members. Just wanted to give you a brief update on an item that was brought to you a few months ago. Idea to bring something that would be an event that would bring the community together in the form of a turkey trot. So, we had the inaugural one through our community host of the Trophy Club Emergency Volunteers Association, also Angels Fall Up. Just as a courtesy reminder, all the net proceeds from this all volunteer event go to cancer research and also local emergency volunteers. So, I'm very happy to report that for our inaugural event, we had over 200 people register. So, in a very short period of time, not only we had over 200 people register, but we also had a significant amount of sponsors come and provide their support towards this great initiative. So, I'm also...
Excuse me?
Oh, and volunteers. So, just to kind of give you an idea, we had over 50 volunteers come out to support the event also. So, this is something that really across the board through our event steering committee, we had a lot of hard work that was put in. We had great support from the town, from fire and the police department as well to provide a safe and secure environment for the event. So, it was really something that was over a very short period of time. It was only a 5K, but we had a great turnout. We're very happy with the results. We look forward to doing this again in the future. So, again, this was our inaugural event, but I think we'll have it for many years to come, and hopefully next year we'll be pushing over 300. So, very exciting news. Thank you again for the support and coordination with the town, and we look forward to next year.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thank you.
The next person who signed up to speak was Brian Brennan. Brian, if you want to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hopefully, this goes up high enough. My name is Brian Brennan. I live at 2748 Chatswood. I'm here tonight to ask the council and the mayor why a special election has not been called for Mr. Jensen's, or Councilman Jensen's seat since he enacted a resign to run rule when he posted on Facebook he was running for mayor. The town attorney has advised council that Councilman Jensen has, in fact, enacted that resign to run rule, and he must resign immediately. A call for a special election must take place within 120 days. I have provided detailed case law that specifically supports call for a special election. Why has the election not been called? Council should fulfill its ministerial duties and call for the special election. There has been some question of Councilman Jensen's post on Facebook constitutes an announcement. According to the Texas Attorney General, an announcement is defined as "an officer announces his candidacy for office by making a written or oral statement from which a reasonable person may conclude that an individual intends without qualification to run for office." And I've listed those statutes in the email that I sent to you on the case law. The citizens of Trophy Club expect our council to follow the state law and the Texas Constitution. We all know that Texas Constitution grants the authority to council and allows city charter to be formed. Texas state law and the Constitution supersedes the town charter. The fact that Councilman Jensen did not file as required by the city charter does not supersede what the Texas Constitution states. If the council does not follow the law and the Constitution, a dangerous precedent for future council members could be set. I have consulted with an attorney in reference to this case and feel confident we'll be victorious in court of law. I believe in the law, and I'm willing to be and prepared to move forward if a special election is not called. As mentioned in my previous email, I have contacted the media, and they are interested in the story. I'm scheduled to meet with them later this week to discuss what happens tonight at this meeting. I provided them with all the documentation that I provided you. The fact that council does not want to call the election is alarming to me. What happened to transparency and following the oath you swore to uphold upon taking office? As a police officer, I took a note to uphold the laws and constitution of Texas, and I expect my elected officials to do the same. Please follow the law in your ministerial duty and call the special election for Councilman Jensen's seat. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Just to let you know, you're probably aware, we can't discuss that item at this point. Just as a point for you is that Item 10 will allow for some of that discussion if anybody wants to ask questions tonight. Yes, Ryland?
The town attorney does not make any statements. He, that was untrue. I don't know how you can handle that.
We have time to talk about that.
So, we have a time to address the issue, right?
Yeah, but the audience won't be here to hear it.
I've never met Mr. Brennan.
Yeah, I know.
All right. So, anyway, anybody else wishing to speak tonight during citizens' presentations? Don't see one seeking to come forward, so we will move on to Item Number One, announcements and reports. Receive Town Manager Class's update and provide input regarding the following upcoming events and office closures. Mr. Class?
Evening, mayor and council. Parks and Recreation staff will host the annual gingerbread house decorating event at the fire station this Friday night, December 14th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It's a very popular event that provides our children the opportunity to display their creative side while at the same time enjoying hot chocolate and Christmas cookies. Right now, we currently have 35 signed up for the event. We have space available for 40, so any parents wishing to fill the remaining five slots can do so by registering on the Parks and Rec website at tcparks.org. And then I'd also like to remind everyone of the town offices will be closed on Monday, December 24th, Tuesday, December 25th, and Tuesday, January 1st for the Christmas and New Year's holidays. In addition, there will be no collection of trash, recyclables, or bulk materials on Tuesday, December 25th, or Tuesday, December, or I'm sorry, January 1st. And then the weekly schedule is, in the past, will be delayed by one day, and the pickup will be Wednesdays and Saturdays. For any information that others may seek, you can go to our website at www.trophyclub.org. And then lastly, I just want to remind council that we will not have a meeting on Tuesday, December 25th in respect for the Christmas holiday. So, with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Council, any questions about those events and schedules? Seeing no one wishing to speak, we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Class. I have number two, badge pinning ceremony for newly hired police officers and fire marshal. Mr. Class, our chief of RADA.
Mayor and council, I want to thank you for this opportunity tonight to welcome our newest officers. So, if you don't mind, no disrespect, I'm going to turn around and face the audience. Welcome, everybody. Tonight's a very special night for both the police department and the fire department. This is one of the special occasions when we have the opportunity to reward or thank our new officers and do that ceremonial event where we pin officers with the badge. The badge is one of the most visible signs and item that a police officer or firefighter wears. It's not the actual symbol that gives us our authority, it's our credentials. This is what we keep in our pocket. You never really get to see them, so here's an opportunity tonight to see what they look like. So, for Trophy Club, this is what we give our officers. But for the community, this is what's built into the depths of police officers and tradition. True tradition resides in the badge. It's on every uniform, and when we show up, no matter what the police department is that shows up, or firefighter shows up, this is what you see when somebody like me approaches your door, your car, or you in public. So, that's the symbol that makes it special and gives us that one little thing that lets you know that somebody is there to help you that day. And it's an honor for me to stand here today and be in front of you with the fire chief. We have a very unique situation here in Trophy Club, that we truly are a team. So, my team, the police department and the fire department, have officers tonight that we're going to pin. So, we have three brand-new police officers that just came out of the academy. The council was very supportive of me and the police department and allowed me to go out and hire great people, to make them really good police officers, to make this truly the safest place to live. And then on top of that, they even supported me to go beyond that and build a management team to take this police department to the next level. And the last time we did this, we welcomed Captain Woodard from the Urban Police Department with 33 years of experience. And tonight, we'll be welcoming Captain Tillman, who did seven years with the Monroe Police Department, 27 years with the FBI, actually was a police chief in Mississippi, and we, with his family, helped drag him back here and were able to hire him here. So, and on top of that, we have two new sergeants to the police department. Sergeant Mitchell came over from the Urban Police Department with 27 years with the Urban Police Department as a sergeant over there, and his specialty was SROs, supporting schools. So, that's what he does for us. He supports our SROs and our schools. We have four schools with over 4,500 kids in them. So, he's a welcomed addition. And then we just recently picked up Sergeant Coletta, who did Kansas City Police Officer for 10 years, and then he joined DEA and did 27 years with DEA. So, he just loves being a police officer, and he came here and said, "I want to help." And so, with the council's support and the mayor, they allowed me to hire these people to train the future of this police department. So, tonight, and then, of course, we have the brand-new fire marshal, the first fire marshal this city's had, and I think the first time, right? Yep. So, and Cochran, he comes from Wesley? I'll let the captain be introduced by the fire chief, I'm sorry.
We're greatly pleased to have Gary Cochran coming onboard as our full-time fire marshal. He comes to us with 37 years of experience, multiple departments, but retired from Bedford Fire Department, and then came to us through Grapevine as well. So, been in charge of some very big projects in Grapevine, including Great Wolf Lodge and several other great big projects over there. So, we're very pleased to have him onboard as he's looking after PD 30 and PD 25 as we continue to build out this city.
So, council, mayor, with my honor, we're going to bring up our three newest officers and introduce them first and swear them in. Judge Ransburg is with us tonight to introduce, yes, I'm sorry, to swear, do the oath for our officers tonight. So, Judge?
All right. I'm going to call up the new officers first, Brandon Buff, Joshua Hernandez, and Shereen Contreras. Please come forward.
By the authority vested in me, I now administer your oath of office. If each of you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Joshua Hernandez.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of police officer
faithfully execute
of the state of Texas
of the state of Texas
and will to the best of my ability preserve
and will to the best of my ability preserve
protect and defend
protect and defend
the Constitution and laws of the United States
the Constitution and laws of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God
so help me God. Everybody. Next, we have the badge, actually placed the badge on the police officers for the first time. So, Brandon Buff will be pinned tonight by his wife Adriana, his children Madison, McKenzie, and Miranda are all here in attendance as well. All right, next is Shereen Contreras. She will be pinned tonight by her parents, Cameron and Nelda Shahou San. Is that close?
Shahou San.
Shahou San.
Close enough.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to call the newly appointed members of our department's leadership teams. Captain Bobby Tillman, Sergeant Jeff Mitchell, Sergeant John Carlita, and Fire Marshal Gary Cochran.
By the authority vested in me, I now administer your oath. If each of you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Robert Tillman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will faithfully execute
that I will faithfully execute
the duties of the office of police officer
the duties of the office of police officer
of the state of Texas
of the state of Texas
and will to the best of my ability
and will to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution and laws of the United States
Constitution and laws of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God
so help me God.
All right, and tonight, Captain Bobby Tillman will be pinned by his wife Naomi, and in attendance tonight, his daughters Leia and Lani are both here tonight as well. All right, next, we have Sergeant Jeff Mitchell, who will be pinned by his wife Courtney. Next, we have Sergeant John Carlita, who will be pinned by his wife, Ben.
Not going to do it on purpose.
And then tonight, we have Fire Marshal Gary Cochran, who will be pinned by his wife,
We're going to stand here, are we going to come out? What are we going to do?
Right there, yeah.
Come out?
Yeah, you want to come out, yeah.
Okay. We're coming out.
I'm short, I know I'm going to the front.
I wanted to stand next to Tillman because I'm a mouthless guy.
Can you get in there? Can you get us off? Can I get him? I want to get right here between.
You're blocking.
You're not going to stand on my toes.
I got you, okay. We're going to be here, all right?
Can you see me?
All right, bye.
Lauren?
Yeah.
Don't get Alicia because she's over there.
No one said there was going to be a picture.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, thank you again for your support, and I'd like to report that the police department is fully staffed.
Thank you, sir. Did you get all the pictures you need, everybody? Anybody else need pictures? Okay. They're going to go in the lobby and take some more, maybe. All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be retained by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have Items Three and Four. Council, does anyone wish to remove either of those items? Seeing no one wishing to do so, Item Three, consider to take appropriate action regarding the town council regular session minutes dated November 13th, 2018. And Item Four, Case AP 18-02 Trophy Club Town Center Edition, consider to take appropriate action regarding a request for approval of amended plat. At this time, would entertain a motion to approve consent.
Make a motion, we approve consent agenda items Three and Four.
So, we have a motion by Roe and a second by Jensen. All in favor, show your hands. We do have a hand raised by Alicia. It is unanimous. Item Five. TK Sup 18-2-01 HG Supply Company, it's a public hearing regarding a request made by HG Supply Company for a specific use permit to allow alcohol beverages on premises consumption bar tavern on approximately 1.84 acres of land, generally located on the northwest corner of State Highway 114 and Trophy Wood Drive. It is 7:28, and we are in a public hearing. Town would recognize town planner Payne for some comments.
Good evening. The purpose of this item is to consider a request for a specific use permit for alcoholic beverages at HG Supply Company. The strategic link for this item is infrastructure and development to foster a business-friendly environment. The applicant proposes to sell mixed beverages as well as beer and wine, and this request is in regards to the entire building, which is slated to house a bar, restaurant, and coffee shop, and operate until 2:00 AM. HG Supply is in compliance with the 300-foot separation requirements that schools, churches, and public hospitals, as well as the closest of that group is the Primero School of Westlake in Attrova at 2,800 feet away. Parking needs are addressed by onsite parking as well as a temporary offsite parking lot that is intended to be replaced by a parking garage. The chief of police has reviewed this application and has no objections. The planning and zoning commission considered this item on December 6th and unanimously recommended approval. Staff recommends approval as well as available for questions, as is the applicant.
Holly, did anybody sign up to speak during the public hearing?
No, mayor.
All right. Then I will close the public hearing at 7:29, and we will reconvene into our regular session for Item B. Consider to take appropriate action regarding a request made by HG Supply Company for a specific use permit to allow alcohol beverages on premises consumption. Same item, basic wording before, but we now will take action. We're dealing with ordinance 2018-30 P&amp;Z, council. Anybody wish to ask questions or speak on this item? Ryland?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty eighteen dash thirty P and Z approving case SUP dash eighteen dash zero zero one.
Second.
Motion by Roe, seconded by Jensen, any discussion?
I do have one question. This is a question in honor of the great Garrett Reed. Does voting in favor of this mean they can sell alcohol?
Yes.
Then I am in favor.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. We've called for the vote. If no one wishes to speak, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. And it is unanimous. All right. Item six. Twenty eighteen dash four four TK sup eighteen dash oh two, Aloft Hotel. We will enter a public hearing at seven thirty-one PM. And recognize Town Planner Payne.
Mayor and Council, the purpose of this item is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a hotel on the PD thirty site with less than one hundred and fifty rooms. The strategic link for this is infrastructure and development to foster a business-friendly environment. The applicant, Crea Hotels, which is the group that runs the Hampton Inn next door, is proposing to build an aloft hotel on the PD thirty lot specified for that use but requires an SUP for less than a hundred and fifty rooms according to the development standards. In two thousand and sixteen, Town Council approved the option to obtain an SUP for fewer rooms to allow a limited service hotel to take residence in the PD thirty district if that's what the market demands. The aloft hotel will comply with the other PD requirements, including having meeting space of at least two thousand square feet and having select food service such as room service or a market with snacks and toiletries. Or, yeah, toiletries, sorry. The applicant is requesting that an SUP is approved with a twelve-month period of validity rather than the typical six-month because they are at the mercy of the master developer's timeliness in preparing the site for construction. Town Council has the authority to extend the SUP's period of validity to any length. P and Z considered this item on December sixth and unanimously recommended approval of this SUP with a twelve-month period of validity. So staff is in, staff is in favor of this and recommends approval. And the applicant is available if you all have questions.
All right, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing about this item? Seeing no one seeking the floor, we will close the public hearing and reconvene into our regular session at seven thirty-three. And we are on item six B. Consider to take appropriate action regarding a request for a specific use permit to allow less than a hundred and fifty rooms in a limited service hotel on PD thirty. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Does P and Z, I see Michael here, wish to speak? No? All right. Counsel, any questions? Seeing no one seeking the floor, we will then entertain a motion. Someone wish to move?
I'll move to approve ordinance twenty eighteen dash thirty-one P and Z. Approving a specific use permit dash eighteen dash zero zero two for the aloft hotel.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. By Councilmember Roe moved and Kurt seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing no one wishing the floor, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Item number seven. Discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration on the January eighth, twenty nineteen Council Agenda and items from the Town Council Future Agenda Items List. Item number two on that list was discussion of green ribbon grants for beautification along the sound wall of one fourteen. Counsel, I did reach out to the Council of Governments for North Texas. Did obtain an application. In our particular plan, if we choose to move forward, it would be a submitted plan by the municipalities of South Lake Trophy Club and West Lake and maybe Roanoke if it goes that far. So as we begin to move forward on this item, I'll bring that back to you with more detail. In order to accomplish this, a plan has to be developed. The Organization of Metropore Cities Partnership is willing to help coordinate and make that plan happen if we choose to do so. And we have talked to architects about coming up with a general plan that we could bring back to Council and say, this is what you might consider, do you want to move forward and submit it to the Council of Governments? So that's the update I have. Anybody have any questions about that? All right. Item B is item number three on the future agenda list. Receive an update from Town Staff regarding entryway monumentation. Okay. Monumentation, I'm having a hard time, Ryland, saying a lot of words.
You and I both.
And landscaping at the Town of Trophy Club. And so Town Planner Payne will bring us an update.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present an update on the park signs. And I, after listening to Council's comments the last time that this was presented, I contacted the Sign Committee, which consisted of Mayor Portem Schaffner and Councilmembers Roe and Kurtz to get detailed direction on the design of the signs. The result of their opinions is the Independence East sign remaining in place and simply adding a tab on top to indicate east and field numbers five through seven. A new Independence Park West sign, it has the same language as Indy East, but it's shown as a shorter version at sixteen and a half feet roughly versus a twenty-two feet long. Split face CMU is proposed to match Indy East, but aluminum is proposed in place of steel that is on Indy West or Indy East. It also has a tab on top that indicates west and fields one through four. The new community pool sign and Freedom Dog Park sign replicate the new Indy West sign but without that tab on top. The Harmony Park sign is shown with two options. The first repeats the design of the signs just discussed. The second utilizes the existing base and columns and only replaces the existing styrofoam panel with an aluminum panel. Council and staff were interested in the structural integrity of the existing Indy West and community pool signs. So Tignol Perkins was sent to inspect and evaluate those two signs. The engineer's report describes the damage and includes photos to back up the recommendation to build foundations of a sign four to six inches above grade and minimize, that minimizes water damage that leads to structural failure. And it warns that cracks due to settlement may be difficult and costly to repair. The two existing signs are tilted. They have multiple cracks, they have buried foundations. And, which is why the option to simply replace the panel is not included for Indy West or for the community pool signs. The estimated cost of the signs is approximately twenty-seven hundred dollars for the Indy East tab and twenty-seven thousand dollars for the other four monument signs. If the Harmony Park sign is updated with a panel rather than a new monument sign, then the cost goes down to about twenty-seven hundred dollars for that. Staff's looking for direction, is available for questions.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can you back up to the other slide just for a second?
This one or one before?
I thought we had some discussion, and maybe I'm wrong, that on the column, if you look at the center part of the sign, on the column that's the tallest on the left, that we had said put a TC logo there. Did that not happen or am I dreaming?
There was, there were different opinions on that. And so that's why I went to the Sign Committee since there, they, we've had deeper discussions about it. And one person did not want the logo, the other two could go either way on it. So we went with no logo. However, if the Council decides to add a logo, it's around, I forget, somewhere between twenty-five hundred and five thousand dollars per logo.
All right. Councilmember Roe, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Um, so, I know we're not agenda to take action, but I'll kind of let you all know my thought process on this. What I'd kind of like to see from staff when we are ready to take some action is obviously, you know, cost estimates broken out. But my inclination is going to be to phase these, have these plans ready and locked in because I do think ultimately we want to have, you know, the consistent look and feel that Tim's been talking about for a long time. So having this part done is like more than half of the project, really. Now it's just a matter of what's it gonna cost and when are we gonna, when and if are we gonna feel like, you know, approving the funds, so.
Go ahead, Ryland.
That was kind of weird. So, so my recommendation would be that that be our next move. And I was one of the either-or opinion on the logo. I mean, a little pricey, but on the other hand, we have this logo, it's a thing. So, I mean, I guess we could present that as an option. But that's kind of where I'm at. And so I appreciate the work on this and the output, given that consistent look. So, thanks, Lisa.
Thank you. If Council decides that y'all want to move forward and y'all can advise staff to do an RFP so we can send it out and we can have multiple bidders come in so that they'll have specific estimates and they'll have specific plans that will be, y'all can, we can decide and move forward with that.
So I have another question. Did we have some funds set aside for this already, Tom? Or anyone?
There are some funds available at this point in time, I believe about fifty thousand dollars is available for this year.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else have questions? Alicia, did you have anything? Okay, she shook her head, no. All right, very good. Oh, I'm sorry. Phillip, last time I looked, you weren't there.
The, the only question that I had, can you go back one slide? I guess I was under the assumption that the Harmony Park and the Dog Park or the Community Pool would match these signs. They don't really match if you... So, will they match or is this, because that's, I don't, I don't remember this, Ryland, that I thought that we were shown everything matching.
They, they match except for the tabs, just because there's not a purpose for the tabs on top of these.
No, I'm talking about, well, the Community Pool looks different than...
You're saying the typeface.
Okay, the font, that's only because I was given by the contractor what just said Independence Park. And so I just went in yesterday and wrote over it in Adobe.
It's a rough, it's a rough, yeah.
I did the closest I could get.
Okay, so they will look like the Independence.
Yes, it will be a perfect match.
And, and as you probably guessed, I was the one that didn't really, but, you know.
Oh, I'm surprised.
Does anybody want to ask Phillip how many times he voted against the logo five years ago?
Three times in one night.
All right.
Lamont and I.
Thank you very much for the report.
That's his Polk High touchdown story. I voted against that three times.
You can't take action on it. Well, let's see.
It's a future.
I think it's just discussion.
It's just discussion.
So.
So I think the natural deal would be we have offered suggestions and Tom, you can place it back on the agenda as you see fit.
So everyone is in a group.
Well, item C does say and take appropriate action, excuse me.
You're welcome.
We don't have to take action.
If possible, we'd like to get some direction and move forward. Alicia's trying to get to your attention.
Alicia?
Hi there. I, for one, I remember the discussion about the logo that we had before. One of the reasons why we thought maybe not have anyone is it might date the signs since our logo does change over time. I think that was one of the reasons that came up before.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have a comment? So I, okay, yes, Tim?
I'd like to direct them to go out for an RFP. For both, sorry. I'd like to direct them to go out for an RFP to get this process moving. She's been patient enough with us for a year now.
About, yeah.
Take action.
We want to start moving this process along, so I would, but I'd ask for both with logos and without.
Okay.
So if I'm looking at item B, I don't see that it says take appropriate action nor do I see item seven that says a major part of this is take action. So, somebody look at that and I'll take that as a direction to the Town Manager?
Yes.
Anybody have a comment about that?
Good here.
All right. Very good then.
Thank you.
Alicia, did you have anything else? No, okay. All right. Okay. Item C is number four on our future agenda list. Discussion to take appropriate action regarding the development of a parkland dedication fund policy. Councilmember Jensen placed this on the agenda some time ago and our Director of Administrative Financial Services, Jonathan Phillips, will speak to us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the Mayor mentioned, in coordination with Councilmember Jensen's request, we looked at best practices for eligible uses of parkland dedication funds. As you may recall, there's, there's some money in lieu of land that towns received. And so I believe Councilmember Jensen's intent for this was to look for some guidelines of what eligible projects were and ineligible projects were. The information was included in your packet, but I will go through that quickly with you. The strategic link to this is exercising fiscal discipline in all town operations. So, looking, looking through and what some other communities have done, this is a, I feel like a pretty comprehensive list of eligible projects to use that money for. Those would be acquisition of land for park purposes, capital projects for development of new parks, capital projects to increase the capacity of existing parks or recreation facilities, and then projects for repair, renewal, or lifecycle replacement for fixed and recreation and park assets. In that, in those projects, the, the proposal is to include the planning, the designing, all, all aspects of the project, not just the, the material itself. Potential ineligible projects on this list would, would any non-capital costs of studies, ongoing operations, maintenance, those types of things that you wouldn't typically recommend funding out of a one-time funding source. Any project that would require operating budgets, again, we've got one-time monies that we're trying to maximize. Any costs associated with the acquisition of non-fixed or portable recreation assets, sports equipment, you know, just service and supply type items. Any cost or work associated with facilities or property not owned by the town, we don't want to be spending those funds on, on another property. Any capital project associated with facilities operated through a public-private partnership to deliver town recreational services. Any capital project associated with land that is not a public park or used for recreational purposes. And then any sort of addition to parks that include like plaques engraving, you know, from time to time we get requests for different benches and things like that that might go into a park. So anything with a value of less than ten thousand dollars. Again, the purpose of this item really is look for some direction. If Council's amenable to these guidelines, then we can include those in our financial policies.
All right. Councilmember Jensen, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'd recommend that we add it to the next meeting's consent. Gives Council plenty of time to get back with staff to get any clarifications or recommend changes. And I would assume it's something we need to vote on as a Council. Mayor, would you agree?
I agree.
So that would be my, my recommendation is to just have it on consent next meeting.
Councilmember Roe?
I'm really happy with what you showed us. Can you go back to the previous slide? There's one little thing I'd like to maybe ask you guys to brainstorm and see if maybe you can narrow it a little bit, and that's the fourth bullet. The only reason being is that I know when there was, when we had the Park Bond in two thousand and nine and obviously there were a lot of large projects that were funded through, through those funds. One of the, one of the sort of concerns or criticisms from the public and in some cases the math bears it out and in others maybe it was just more concern than actual, you know, result. But in both cases, I think it's valid. And it had to do with expanding something, having an asset. And now obviously there's a, there's a maintenance cost to that asset. And you did exclude maintenance in the, in the second slide. But I, I'd look at something, something with repair, renewal, and lifecycle replacement. If there is just some other way there, I can see where you're getting at. And I think things like our remodeling of our bathrooms at Indy, Indy West. Like, to me, that's probably a good use because that was twenty years down the road, right? But I want to make sure we don't find ourselves in a situation where we, we're, we're paying for since the past to use a bat, to use a, maybe a poorly fitting analogy for this. But, but make sure that this particular, this particular funding source that we were, we were fortunate enough to have is really, really focused, with some potential exceptions, on expanding, you know, expanding the use and getting more, finding ways for people to interact with the parks and get more value out of them. So, generally, I think it's probably okay as it is, you know, because discretion is always exercised either direction. But if there's some way... either direction. But if there's some way you guys can think about a way to responsibly narrow that a little bit more, I'd, I'd be interested in hearing it.
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks.
Councilmember Lamont?
I guess my concern a little bit was with the word "repair." I think parkland dedication, like bathrooms would be renovation to me. I wouldn't consider that a repair. So I just have a little question about repairs, 'cause that could eat up the money pretty quick.
Alright, and then I ask for the floor. I see this slide, and the fourth bullet point talks about repair, renewal. Now, go forward one slide where you said, "Don't allow..." The maintenance portion of that seems to contradict a little bit, and so maybe Greg's suggestion about wording is appropriate, or maybe there's a way to place something in there of either a not-to-exceed amount for repairs or a must-exceed an amount for repairs. I don't know how we solve that problem, but I appreciate, I think it was Phillip that brought to us initially, some concern over using our funds specifically for projects that wouldn't just be eaten up by repair over the years. So, and I think that's what you were talking about too, Ryland, so I'm not quite sure how we solve it here, but try to address that as you refine that.
Sure.
Which I think is good. Anybody else wishing to speak? Any citizens wishing to speak? Alright, Jonathan, anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Alright. And item seven D, it's item five on the future agenda items list. Discussion: Take appropriate action regarding updating the town's stormwater master plan. And Community Development Director Uzi has the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in 2012, the, the town came about with the stormwater master plan. It's, was to be done in three phases. Phase one was to detail the study of five different locations of the town that were problem childs, I guess you might call them, that needed to be taken a look at. The second part was a review and analysis for recommendations for the remaining systems in town. And part three was coordination of regional drainage concerns with neighboring communities in pursuit of grant funding operations for studies and improvements. Of the five problems that were identified, number one was Marshall Branch at Trophy Club Drive, which is the bridge at Trophy Club by the tom thom. Skyline Drive in Indian Creek, excuse me, with the bridge improvement and the culverts addition, which is still closed. Overhill and Timber Ridge, Fresh Meadow and Cypress Creek. Of those five, the Cypress Creek, which was a plan to go in and put some protection in, in the portions of the creek that were eroding it, it was not a flooding issue or a possible or probable flooding location. Fresh Meadow was taken care of, Skyline as well, Overhill and Timber Ridge. I could find all information on that or even going back through history with individuals that might have been involved, that anything was done at that location. And I'm gonna continue looking until I can figure that out. And obviously, the, the Marshall Creek at Trophy Club Drive Bridge, it remains the same. When the update requirement or request came about, the, I reached out to Freezing Nichols and asked them to submit something that they could. They came up with a plan that would identify basically the hydrological and hydraulic calculations based on the corrections that were made. And if you look up the map, we've got the Fresh Meadow area that was identified, which made a, a good change that, that was causing, there were problems causing with erosion and flooding at the golf course and things of that nature. And on down line to the Trophy Club, or I mean, I'm sorry, to the Indian Creek Bridge, to where they added the culvert. The hydrological changes will not be retested and won't affect anything that happens at that point. It's only the hydrology based on the velocities of the channeling of what was done. And they also wanted to go by, back and test the hydrological study at Skyline Drive, at the bridge, with the third and fourth, or the fourth opening open both with undeveloped downstream and with developed downstream to see what effect it might have. One of the curds, the issues that came about was the bottleneck at the end of where you come into TW King, and I found it interesting to find that the town goes to the middle of TW King. Now, when you get to that point, it tees out, and that's all part of what's in our side. It looks like that, other than wanting to go in and put in a free-span bridge, which was what the recommendation was, it's open with six separate culverts. The addition of coming in and maybe getting some more easements in order to expand, it may be the bigger issue. But that's what the studies would determine what would need, need to happen. We did obtain the easement at the, on Indian Creek where we added those barrels, so we, that, that one's taken care of. The, they did wanna concentrate on that section specifically though, which would get us moving forward for everything else that's happening out there. They did identify it with the price tag of about $35,000, which, if that's added into another project, you could, could actually drop, because some of the things, like I said, the hydrology itself would not be recalculated. There's no need to. And they're only looking at the parts at Fresh Meadow and, and the Trophy Club Bridge that would have changed the hydraulics. And at that, let me back up. I'll be here for questions.
Alright, anybody have any questions about this? Phillip?
Yeah, so, so you, you said that the town property goes to the middle of TW King?
That's, that's, the documents that I found did identify that. That's correct. 'Cause my concern was, at that point, since there are five barrels, or six barrels there that feed through, and they're talking about a free-span, what they recommended was a free-span bridge that opens that up with continuous flow, that at that point, we'd be, be getting involved, obviously, with another city. And, and what I found as late as this morning, as a matter of fact, that that's what it identified. Now, that was based on the 2014 study, when all this was developed and, and designed out for what they wanted to plan. If there's been changes, and since then, I have not picked up on it.
I can tell you, South Lake disagrees with you, so we may wanna, we may wanna figure that out, because it does go to the point of whose responsibility that is. And, and if, if, if the study is identifying that that's a bottleneck, which obviously, if you, if you go down there during any kind of event, you see mainly, mainly debris that collects at that point, but certainly a lot of flow of water, because that's where the endpoint is. But we may wanna, we may wanna figure that out, who's, who's actual bridge that is.
And that would be part of the study that they looked at for the, for the submittal that they've given to us to look into?
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, that's good. That's exactly what I was looking for, is those, those particular points and, and what our improvements have done.
Okay.
Alright, Councilmember Lamont?
A friend of mine lives at the end of Fresh Meadow, and he was greatly impressed how with all the rains in October and September, how well the water was moved out.
Correct.
Unlike the old days. I don't know if that was a one-timer, but if that's certain, some type of plan that we could use again, it could work very well, according to him.
Yeah, at that point, they actually created more of a soil that was placed behind the houses that along, run along the golf course, and they opened up an, an outfall into that pond that put it into there, and, and another one that to have it feed out. So it flowed much better. And one of the things I took into consideration when I was looking into this was the nights of the events. While we were getting, you know, information from what was happening all over the city, there were no events that we got recorded in that area. And the same is downstream up until, until you get to Indian Creek, at which point we had one, but that, that was a, a foul design of the property in question. It had nothing to do with what was going on that night. So it helps us really make a decision to concentrate more on the Skyline, at the bridge, on Indian Creek and Skyline, and to downstream to where it all terminates. We just need the hydraulic study up ahead, because that's the only thing that changed, and that's all that'll change on the model as well.
So I know Skyline is on the board. Is Summit Cove gonna be looked at, or is that on the board?
That is not listed anywhere. It's, it's on the radar, though.
Okay. Councilmember Rowe?
So I have a question about the bridge there at Indian Creek and Skyline and that September 22nd event. I didn't get a chance to, I kinda wanted to go out there and check it out, but it was way too rainy. Very close to home. I was gonna take the golf cart there. My better half talked me out of it. So anyway, my question is, was the closure there on the road due to, you know how there, there are surface drains on the road? Was it those, those were not keeping up with the flow, or was it actually topped by the creek flow?
I believe it was topped by the creek flow. I don't know. I was standing at the bridge at Trophy Club in Marshall Creek.
Yeah.
And I'm just getting language back, that that was one of the areas hit in Indian Creek at PD 30 in front of the Hogans. I did not physically see what it was, or even later on here. I do know it went down fast.
Right.
So I, I would make the presumption that it was probably just the, the rain flow and the hydraulics that were passing through there at that time.
Okay. Councilmember Schaffner?
Yeah, and one other thing, or two other things here. I think this goes to your point, Ryland. I, I think that that's why that easement was so important to get, because I think if you open up that fourth culvert, you probably, I mean, that, that was built for those specifications originally, and we had to close that up. So I think if that opens up, I think that that solves a lot of that problem. The other thing is, is I would assume that we could pay for this through the Storm Drainage Fund for this study?
I would have, I would think so, but I would have to research that.
Okay, and I don't know if, if we, if we want to put that on a, on an agenda in the future to go ahead and proceed with that. It probably would be wise.
And one of the other options, obviously, is that we could, we're looking into grants that would help take care of that, because it's an overall town plan, so.
Thank you. Alright, so while we're dealing with the future agenda list, let's go back through A, Holly will leave on the future agenda list. B, how does everybody feel? Wanna remove it from the future agenda list, 'cause it's gonna come back with specific proposal? How do you feel about taking the monumentation off?
Yep.
Well, it's only part of the monumentation, so that didn't really deal with entryway. What do you think?
That is true. It is mostly, it is parks, so.
Yeah, okay. So B maybe stays. C is parkland dedication policy. I think that's gonna come back at us, so C could probably be removed, 'cause we're gonna get something specifically back. And D, we're gonna, are we gonna get something back soon, or do we leave it here to make us remember it? Counsel?
Well, it, it sounds like you probably need to leave it, because if they're, if they're researching grants, then it may...
May take a while. Okay, let's leave D on there for a while, and we'll see what happens with it. Okay, so does anybody else have something to add to future agenda list? I do, but, so I put my name in. So, I, I would like to add to our future agenda list, discussion and planning to deal with a right-turn lane with acceleration lane to turn right and head west on Highway 114 at Trophy Lake Drive. And if there's no objection to adding it, then I'll add a couple of more comments. Anybody object?
So, what location, sir?
Exiting Trophy Lake Drive at 114.
To go west.
Being able to have a right-turn lane with an acceleration lane onto the service road to head west. So people that wanna turn west don't have to wait for the light in some cases.
Right, so it's still within Town and Trophy Club?
It's all our property.
I think so. There's, I don't know exactly where that border of Westlake is, but in any of it, we'll have to deal with Tech Dot, so.
I think it's all ours.
Yeah, I'd support that, for sure.
Alright, so what's happening for us is obviously the major development of Charles Schwab in Westlake. And they are forecasting by the time they finish their three phases with 6,000 daytime employees. And although they are widening and extending Schwab Way over to 170, there's still gonna be people that decide which way they're gonna go. So that intersection is just gonna get more crowded for us, and people already have issues of trying to get out of town from time to time. I don't know how it might work. I don't know what it costs, but I'm just wanting it to be on our future agenda so the staff can kinda begin to look at it and talk to Tech Dot and various people. So that was the reason I wanted to get it on there. Is that still okay with everybody? Alright, Eric, you wanted an item, or?
No, that, that was for that item.
Okay, alright. Anybody else have an item to add to future agenda? Alright, hearing none, we have finished everything up to our executive session, and in just a moment, I'm gonna read the items for executive session, and we will enter into executive session. Item eight, pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. A, Section 551-071, consultation with attorney. And item A1, case number 189681158, Town and Trophy Club v. Michael Sly. Item A2, Loop Road, with an update for Mr. Class. And item A3, resign to run special election issues that we will discuss and talk about. Item B, Section 551-072, deliberation regarding real property, to discuss deliberation, the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, if deliberation in an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body and the negotiations with a third party. B1, north of State Highway 114, east of Trophy Club Drive and west of Town Limits. And item B2, potential transfer of property. And then item number C, Section 551-074, personnel matters to discuss or deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, municipal court judge position is up for appointment and action. It is 8:06, and we are in executive session. Alicia's back, so you ready back in the room? Counsel, if you will come to order, we will reconvene into regular session at 10:14 PM. Item number nine, consider to take appropriate action regarding ordinance of the Town and Trophy Club, appointing a presiding judge and alternate judges for the Town, for Trophy Club Municipal Court of Record Number One, and providing an effective date. And the chair would recognize Councilmember Jensen for a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 2018-32, effective December 10th, 2018, appointing judges terms of office. Presiding Judge Eric Ransblen?
Ransleben.
Ransleben. Alternate Judge Christian Denny, alternate judge Brad Bradley, with terms expiring January 31st, 2021.
I'll second. Any other for discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. Did, did you vote?
No.
Okay, so it's not unanimous. Schaffner, all opposed?
Let's see, all great candidates.
Okay, so Schaffner, no. Okay, on to item 10. Discuss status of resign to run and special election. So I'm gonna read a statement, allow other council people to comment if they'd like to, and if anybody wishes to speak on this item, they need to sign up and give the sign-up sheet to the town secretary. November 13th council meeting, there was an item called, an item to call a special election in response to an inquiry about Councilmember Jensen's comments made on Facebook that might have constituted an automatic resign to run by the state constitution. This item, I'm sorry, at this side, when the item was introduced, or being introduced, the chair received an objection to consideration, which does not require a second, and there can be no discussion. This item was unanimously supported. From my viewpoint, there were some areas related to the prior Texas Attorney General opinions, where the words used to automatically enact the resign to run area of the Texas Constitution could be interpreted differently by various viewpoints. Having, at this point, we have been told by Tarrant County Civil Division that it will take over 120 days before we could get an opinion, and most likely as far out as a year, to get an AG opinion. And that's an opinion about whether or not the words put on Facebook constituted an enacting of the automatic resignation. So does anybody else wish to speak about the issue? Ryland?
Thank you, sir, yeah. So, in, in the, in the process of dealing with this, one of the things that was brought up in a previous meeting, and our town attorney offered to provide a public, publicly consumable statement regarding an opinion that... statement regarding an opinion that he had. And with his consent and the consent of the council, I'm going to read that to you now. Says that we, we requested an opinion from the Secretary of State on whether Eric Jensen would be eligible to run in a special election if one was called for his seat. The Secretary of State ruled that Eric Jensen would be eligible to run in a special election if one was called for his seat, and he concurs with the opinion.
All right.
That's all I have.
Any other council wishing to speak? You need to enter your name into the queue if you wish to speak on this item. Holly, did anybody turn in a sheet wishing to speak or ask questions?
No, Mayor.
All right. So we will then move on to item 11. Item 11 is consider to take appropriate action regarding the executive session. Anybody wish to make a motion? Greg Lamont, put his name in the queue. Greg?
I'd like to move to direct staff to place on our January 8th regular council meeting the calling of a special election for council, council place two, to fill the remainder of the term to expire in May of 2020.
Read that again, please.
Like to move to direct staff to place on our January 8th, 2019, regular council meeting, the calling of a special election for council place two, to fill the remainder of the term to expire in May of 2020.
All right. Anyone wishing to second? I'll second that. So a motion by Greg and a second by Sanders. Any discussion? Eric?
Have a conflict of interest. I will, will be abstaining from a vote. Bill calling an election in a seat that I currently held, hold would be inappropriate.
All right. So Councilmember Jensen has stated that he feels like he has a conflict of interest in voting on this item. Anybody else? Discussion? Comments? All right. Hearing none, we will, I'm sorry.
Hello?
I'm sorry, Alicia. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you read the motion one more time, please?
I would like to move to direct staff to place on our January 8th, 2019, regular council meeting, the calling of a special election for council place two, to fill the remainder of the term to expire in May of 2020.
Any questions, Alicia?
I have a question for David.
Yes.
Would that absolve any personal liability for council members that voted and what would be the?
This, this isn't calling the election. It doesn't.
Okay.
I'm trying to, I'm going to walk a line for what I've said to executive session, not answering it public, but it doesn't, this isn't calling the election. This is placing it on the agenda. The advice I've given you all, the information I've given you all before would relate to that January 8th agenda item and any vote there, if it's on that agenda. This is just a motion to place it on that agenda.
To satisfy that requirement?
It doesn't.
That thing?
No.
No?
No.
What requirement are you asking? Satisfy, satisfy what requirement?
This is not calling the election.
This is the first step.
It's placing it to be considered.
So she can understand. This is a motion to direct staff to place something on our agenda to call the election at our January regular meeting.
The, I believe the questions you're asking will probably pertain to the vote if this is on the agenda on the January 8th.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that would postpone this indefinitely.
I'll second.
So we had a motion and a second to postpone the motion indefinitely. Discussion is about postponing. Anybody wish to speak?
Yep.
I, I'm sorry. Sorry for all the questions. It's kind of hard doing this from here.
I'd like, I'd like.
Um, indefinitely means we don't ever talk about it again?
I'll ask David to respond. I, I have an opinion, but.
Um, I'm researching it right now, so it depends.
Can I, do you mind if I go ahead and speak?
Y'all got that.
All right. So Dave is not quite ready. So Ryland, you asked to speak?
I support Phillip's motion because the prior motion on the floor implies that a precondition has been met. And it's unable to determine at this time whether or not the precondition has been met.
All right. Anybody else? Still waiting on David's opinion.
It's, what I'm finding is it says the effect of the motion is not to postpone it, the main motion, but to prevent action on it for the duration of the current session.
So.
So it would not be considered today, but any next meeting or any future meeting, that motion could come forward.
Could you hear that, Alicia?
Yes. So just note, postponing just means not talking about it.
Tonight.
Tonight.
Correct.
Again.
Or.
All right.
And then one more question, David. What is the last date? I, I.
I believe it's.
So stop me if I'm, how about this? Stop me if I'm going to say something that I'm not supposed to say.
We pass.
Just wave at me so I can speak to David, okay? We're all in this unfortunate position where we have to be discussing this, and I'm not trying to be personal about it or emotional about it or anything like that. I'm just trying to understand the rules, policies, procedures and the law and personal liability. Sorry to sound selfish, but that is my concern. So if, what is the date that we would have to vote to call an election in order to satisfy the initial duty if that becomes a player in this? Because we don't know yet.
The last day to call the election, from my recollection, is actually January the 8th, which is the regularly scheduled council meeting date, first, first meeting in January. That's the last day to call a special election that will be held within the 120-day timeframe.
All right. Did you get your answer?
So that is the last.
Without having a special called council meeting earlier, that would be the last day that we could do something and fit it in within the 120 days. All right. Ryland?
I would like to take this opportunity to remind counsel that we have received two written and one verbal threats of legal action on this matter, and it is prudent to seek legal advice in executive session.
Was, I'm sorry, Ryland, is that directed to me? Like I, that's what I said. Let me know if I'm not supposed to ask something in open session because it was changed so quickly.
It was to counsel.
It was to the entire council. Just a reminder about where we are. All right. Anybody else have a question before we vote? All right. So the motion came from Councilmember Schaffner to postpone indefinitely the motion that Councilmember Law Lamont made. Is that clear what you're voting on?
And that means indefinitely means this.
This meeting will be no more discussion about that motion.
Today.
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 Okay. Cool.
All right. All in favor of the motion to postpone? Show your hands. All right. So Jensen for?
But if Councilman Jensen has a conflict of interest on underlying what he also has one on this.
Because that previous motion was to actually call the election. This motion, it does not affect the actual agenda item to call the election.
We weren't calling the election. It was.
You were placing an agenda item.
Okay.
That affected my seat. I had a conflict of interest if it affects my seat. This motion does not affect my seat.
This motion does affect that motion, though. I'll leave it up to the council on that. The motion was made regarding the original motion, correct?
Yes. It's a motion to postpone indefinitely the consideration of the motion that was made.
I think he's within his, I think he's within his privilege and his position to give his opinion on whether or not it's appropriate to consider the motion tonight.
Typically, when a conflict of interest arises, though, you don't participate in any of the discussion or really even remain on the dais for the consideration of the issue.
Well, we've been talking about his seat quite a bit, David.
I understand.
So I don't understand why we would selectively make that determination now.
All right.
Just so he, he rose the conflict I didn't rise. Bring it up.
So I'll make a comment about conflict. I believe someone declares a conflict when they feel conflicted.
Correct.
So they have to make that decision whether they feel conflicted or not. I'm not making that decision. Neither is the rest of the council, making the decision about him feeling conflicted. So that's what he's doing, just to make that comment. So I'm going to call for the vote again. Alicia's my question.
Okay.
Sorry.
Hello?
Thank you.
I, I, I agree. I mean, Eric has the choice to decide which he's conflicted about and which he isn't. That's his decision. So I agree with, with Mayor on that one.
All right.
If he doesn't feel conflicted with this, then that's his.
All right. All those in favor of the motion to postpone indefinitely, show your hands. Jensen for, Rowe for, Schaffner for, Kurtz for. All opposed, same sign. Lamont and Sanders opposed, and Alicia, how did you vote?
I'm abstaining.
I'm sorry?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. So did you get that, Holly? Who voted?
I did.
Which? Jensen?
Rules procedure.
Rowe?
Oh, you need the motion?
I don't know.
If she doesn't have a conflict of interest, is that still not counted as a no?
Abstention is different than a conflict. Hers is a no vote.
It'll be counted as a no vote.
Mathematically, no.
Right.
According to our rules of procedure.
Right. Okay. So voting for was Jensen, Rowe, Schaffner, Kurtz. Voting against was Lamont, Sanders. Abstaining was flurry, and based on our rules of order, that means a no. All right. So the matter does pass, and any other action council was to take on item number 11. Seeing no one asking to speak, we stand adjourned at 10:31. We are adjourned.